The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at their end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry, I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most, and we're here to help serve them.
To the board of selectmen meeting Monday, July 21st. Could we raise, I mean, could we rise to pledge a flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a public hearing for alcohol license for transfer from Mayan LLC to doing business as a liquor bond. And it's going to be opened at 6:05.
My name is Tom Demakis. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. I called him five minutes ago and said he'd be here in five minutes. So, do you want me to start?
Yeah, you can start, sure.
Good evening.
Could you give us your name so she can...
Yes, my name is Tom Demakis, D-E-M-A-K-I-S. Do you want my address?
No, I have it.
Oh, okay. Okay. I represent the petitioner, Mayank LLC. The principal owner, who owns 80% of the LLC membership interest, is Mayank Patel. The other 20% is owned by his cousin, who's a Canadian resident, Rajesh Kumar Patel. Mayank Patel is the manager of the LLC, and he's the proposed manager of record if you approve this transfer. He's buying... Excuse me, just don't have the chance that this is him. I really apologize for this. I missed the call. That's him. Should I call?
Where he is, if you want.
Brenda, while we're waiting, everything needed is in on this?
Yes, we have everything in, and if it's approved, we'll go to the ABCC for their investigation.
I'm in the basement. Okay, are you in the parking lot? I'm sorry, where are you? Okay, it's coming down.
I can hear them. I can hear them. There we go.
Mayank? Tom, how are you? Have a seat. Oh, hi. Rajesh?
Yeah.
Canada?
Yeah.
What a guy, okay. All right. So, thank you for hanging in there with us. So, Mayank LLC is buying the liquor bond from Dia Liquors or Dia Liquors for $500,000 plus the cost of the inventory. The $500,000 purchase price is being paid by $100,000 of their own money, and Rockland Trust is lending them the other $400,000. The inventory, as you know, is typically taken the night before the closing, so the $150,000 figure is an estimate, and it's typically and will be in this case financed by the seller at 5% interest over 18 months. What we're looking for is an approval of the transfer, and we're also looking to pledge both the license and the inventory to both, Rockland Trust in the first position and to the seller in the second position as collateral for their loans. Are you tip certified?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is it... This is you?
Yeah, this is me.
Okay, so there's a tip certification with a slightly different first name but with the same address in the package, and that is Mr. Patel. He's tip certified. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions they want to ask about the license being transferred? I guess not. Any for the board?
Just a question, just in the notice, a reference to an expansion. Alterations consistent with an expansion of 3,600 feet.
Do you excuse me?
No.
Where do you see that, Mr. Stevens?
Page right here.
The formal announcement of the public hearing.
Oh. It's 2,100 square feet right now, is that right? Yeah. Alterations consistently, well, we put it right in the application, alterations consistent with expansion to 3,600 feet. That's not accurate? You just keep it, just like it is.
You have to just keep it as it is.
I don't know why that's...
No alterations?
There's no changes, yeah. There's no changes.
I was just going to ask where the alterations expansion is going to take place.
I was going to say, because there's no more room in the building, so...
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, possibly. There's nothing to...
Unless they were going up or down, one of the two. Okay.
All right, thanks.
That clarifies that. Any other questions?
I have a question, just to go back to your tip certification. There's a name in question. Does that name match our paper?
Well, I mean, I just changed my name after the citizen, so I have my change of name certificate, like...
I want to know how the license is stated.
Yeah, it's the same thing, yeah, same as the license, but they spell it wrong, though.
Okay, so this is the wrong spelling on the tips.
And they just say they put the T instead of Y.
So it's M-A-Y-A-N-K, right?
A-N-K, yeah.
I would request that you get that corrected.
Okay.
And get that to Brenda, because it's important that, you know, I know it's a small technicality, but...
Should we drop the BAHI, too? Is that what you're looking for?
I guess what I'm looking for is, is we have an application in front of us...
Right.
...with a name.
Right.
And they have to be tip certified, and that tip certification does not match the date on record.
Yeah, like, I took that exam before I became citizen.
And it's okay.
Yeah.
It's just, is, and I will put that stipulation if we approve it tonight, that, you know, we want our records to match, I mean...
Definitely, I mean...
We don't want no wrong spelling or anything else. It's got to be exactly, because when it goes to the A-B-C, boy, they're going to...
They would question it itself, so... That's all I have, is that gets corrected and Brenda...
Any other questions? Other questions?
Would you show us that your formal name before you change it is the same?
I do, but I don't have one right now, but I have the paper that they gave me.
Which is okay, but if you want, I mean, that shouldn't be a big issue to get that changed, I wouldn't think.
Mr. Rajesh, Rajesh Kumar Patel will also send his tips, his hand to be his tip certification, but he's a 20%. He's not going to be the manager.
Right, he's not a manager of our records.
Right.
And that's fine, I appreciate it, but... So that being said, if there's no questions, we're going to talk...
I just have one more.
George's got one.
Just returning to your, the short history you gave in the beginning, the two individuals are currently involved in the enterprise now in different capacities, or...
No, 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 no. They're proposed to be involved as, you know, as transferees. If the, they haven't closed on it yet, so when, if you approve the license transfer and the ABCC approves the license transfer, then these two individuals will be the new owners.
Okay. And your experience with retail alcoholic beverages in the past?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I've been doing since I got here, so...
Why don't you tell them what your experience is?
Yeah, share with us.
Yeah, I worked for, like, I worked four years for the Canadian store, and I work in liquor store, too, because my brother-in-law has a liquor store. I work part-time there, and that's what I've been doing.
Have you been in this area?
Oh, no, not in this area, but like Boston.
I see.
Yeah, my brother-in-law, he owns the store down in Boston, so I work there. And my dad's owned the store in Pittsburgh, so I work there as well, too. So...
And now you're ready for the big leagues.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Are you taking on results?
Yeah.
I'm all set.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ready to take a vote?
No, we've got to close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing at 6:13?
Okay, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the liquor license transfer subject to a new tip certificate. Can you get to Brenda? That's my motion.
Second.
Excuse me, I think you have to do the pledge of license, the pledge of inventory as well, because that's what you had to on the last transfer, so you have to move to do the...
Because one's a finance and one is...
I don't know.
You have to do both.
Okay.
So we'll do this one first.
Yep.
Approval of change of license. We have a motion, we have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're going to make a motion on the inventory?
And I make a motion to allow you to change an inventory based on the 150 figure, which could be subject to change at the time of...
Vote?
Aye.
You're all set.
You're all set.
We need one more, one more vote on the pledge of the license as well.
Yep.
Which we already, we did the approval on the first one. Transfer of license.
Right, but we also need a pledge to the bank.
Oh, for the bank, for the rock...
So I make that as a motion.
Okay. Second. Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I know the feeling. Okay. All right, now we're going to discuss the school budget and the special election decisions. The figure, the figure that we have in front of us is 260,000. That is subject to change tomorrow night when they take their vote. So, we won't be back, I think, for Thursday morning, is it, Brenda?
Yes.
For a special, what should we get the...
Monday, it's going to be Monday at 4:30.
Oh, here is the, anyone around Thursday?
Tony's on vacation. He's not around Wednesday. His father has something. Thursday, I'm the only one at the dealership, so I don't have a major coverage.
So we're going to have to put it off until next week sometime?
Adam should have emailed you guys, hopefully he got it. So we're shooting for Monday?
Monday, okay.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I think the number as it stands today is going to be 260,502,000, depending what happens. The school committee meets tomorrow night. I hope to try to make that one. Based on that reduction because of the added amount from the state coming in, that should reduce that 300,000 down to this number, so... So I will say that it's a back ride from last time when we tried this. I think everybody heard us say at our last meeting, Mr. Pepe was very clear that they've done what we asked them to do, to get it to a number that, listen, the minimum state aid contribution is 252,000. To come from over 300 down to this number, I think they've done a good job, and I think, you know, sometimes when we're critical, which we obviously have to be, because no matter what happens, it does affect town services, it always has. So I think at that point, subject to, and we will hold a meeting to when we get the final number, that final number, anticipation right now is at 260,502. That being said, there's nothing we can do other than wait for that meeting of tomorrow night.
Right. Because this is just a estimate.
This is a guess.
Right.
Well, it's not a guess, but it's as close as we can come with the numbers we receive from the state. And I will tell you, is it has to go on as an override. We know we don't have the money, and it's just a fact of life, isn't it? You know, if this doesn't get through, it affects town services once again. This number comes in where we want it to. You know, we're about 8,500 off of the minimum contribution, but we got rid of 632 on computers. I say we got rid of, we spent 117,000 of free cash once again, and free cash is a one-time thing. It's not like it's going to show up every year, and we never know what that amount is. And the free cash is used for capital, which obviously we haven't done very little of over the last couple of years. So, that's where I'm at on that, is I think that that's definitely going to go that way.
I join you, Gary. I've been, I've been critical of the schools. I voted against overrides. I've been outspoken at the school committee meetings, but, but when they've done what we've asked, I think it's time to recognize that. And this is a, this is a number that I think we should, we should get behind. You know, they, they went back and considered cuts that were originally on the table, you know, passed them up, said they'd come back to them if the override were rejected. They came back and did that. You know, are we still looking for economies in the school? Are we still going to have suggestions to make in the coming year? Yes, just like we do with, with town services, but I, but I think it's, it's a, it's a number that deserves our support, and, you know, we've been reluctant in the past to get out there and, and to, and to, you know, let people know where we stand, but I think in this case, I, we, we need to move ahead together as a, as a community. It's, it's alarming to me where, you know, where we could be if, if we have to go down the road of the district meeting and, and the state coming in one more time. And I think we've, I think, you know, Kevin Hayes has said this, I think we've, we've reached a point to try and turn things around as a district and as a, a school and town partnership, and I think in the best interest of the community so we can get on with, with other issues and really get to work on, on some, on some real education, real education topics that I think we need to, you know, get behind this number. It's, it's right where we would be with the minimum contribution, minimum local contribution. I really think we have to acknowledge that and the hard work that's gone into it and some of the tough choices they've had to make, so... No, no, you're absolutely right. That's, that has to be pointed out, Chris.
Probably go, stay the same or increase.
You know, we need to take control of our communities, you know, we need to be responsible for our own fate, and...
Where we're at on that, I don't know that...
We're not going to take a vote to one of these...
Actually, we don't know what the number is.
Right, till we get the...
Other than the discussion is, is how do we fund this? Obviously, the funding, we don't have the money. I just like to make a couple of comments. As you know, Ms. Gosha was in last week. Even though I don't agree with a lot of what she has to say, she made a couple of good comments, and that being, she felt that it was the school, the school, the school, and we decimated the town services. And, you know what, out of anything she's ever said, that made the most sense, because I look back, I moved back to town in 1978, I think, I think we had 18 highway workers in '78, Mr. Fritz, and I looked, and now we're down to eight. Still producing the same work, maybe not as fast, and maybe not getting as much done. So she's right, when she talks about we decimated this community, because that's really what happens when you, when you're forced to try to make adjustments to save enough money to fund the other services that we provide. Just bothered me that she, you know, they wanted one override, and there's no money in the bank, guys. It's not like we have a safe down here and we can go in and pull this out. So I think it's important for the townspeople to understand that. You know, and my second comment is, you know, it was funny, because I heard somebody say, "I don't care about the community." And I thought about that long and hard, is I was born in this town, my family came from this town, so I kind of went back and dwelled a little bit, and I don't know if you know where Bemis Memorial is?
Yeah.
Now, Samuel Bemis was a second resident, settler of this town, and ironically, he's my ancestor. So when I start hearing, "I don't care about the town," you know, what are we doing? We're definitely not doing it for the money, we're doing it because we care. And the people have to understand that we, as a board, try to function, try to do the right thing, not only for the townspeople but for our employees. So I do take offense to some of the stuff Jen says, but I kind of get where she's coming from, is, and she hit the nail on the head. We just keep decimating services and we keep taking away. And the problem is, is it hurts, I mean, you know, and I'll just be honest with you, is, guys, we have bills coming into the town hall, and we're starting to get late fees because there's not enough time for them to get through the work. I mean, what a shame when it comes down to that. So, and that's my soapbox for today, but to say I don't care about the future community? Come on. I'm vested, and I take offense with whoever said it, and I do know who said it, but it doesn't matter, but to me, it's a sore spot, because nobody cares more about this town than I do.
Sorry, Mr. Fritz. No problem. And as far as the town question for 484,000 to put back everything we took off, that's going to be, we're not 100% sure, but it's going to be six different questions for each department, or we're just one for the 484 like it was on the ballot before. My own personal thing, I'd rather see it go on, the whole thing, is I don't want to pick one department over the other. It's either everybody gets it or nobody gets it, as far as I'm concerned. That's the way I would like to see it go on, is a 484, because otherwise, you're going to be picking and choosing, and that's not the way it should be done. I don't know if anybody else has got any questions about that, but, or if anybody in the audience has any questions they'd like to bring up about it?
Should we tell them that impact?
Does everybody have this paper?
No, that was actually sent out today.
Okay. The 484 would represent 52 cents per thousand, which if you have a $200,000 house would be $104 a year. The 260, 502 would be approximately $56 more impact on your tax bill for the year, for the school.
108 a week, 432 a month for the average taxpayer.
So you're talking 100, roughly $160 more on your tax bill to bring back the town services and to do the school at the figure that we have, have done. And I think that's not, you know, like everything else, everything goes up, I will, my household bills all go up, and so I'm assuming everybody else is due, too. And, you know, if you want the town services, you want to, you know, come up with that $104 if you don't, but the school, like Chris said, it's roughly $56 per taxpayer if you have a $200,000 house, and if we don't pass that, the state's going to come in, and it's going to be a higher figure, and it's going to cost us even more. So, it's one of those things, you either pay now or you pay later, I guess, but whatever way or another, you're going to pay, so... Anybody else got any other questions?
I would think when it comes to addressing, bringing back the figure for town services, I think there are two issues. One is a strategic one, whether or not, you know, at what point does it go on the ballot? Should be on the ballot with, with the school, with the school override, or should it go on a ballot later in the year? And then the other question is, what does that, how does it go on the ballot in terms of a total, whether or not you, you stay with the 484, or as much as we're, we're, we'll be, you know, already a couple months into the, well, a month into the year, but both by the time the, the vote could be taken, it'd be a few months into the new year, whether or not you go back with the 48, the whole 484, or, you know, you look at how you can bring back some of the, some of the services that were, that were affected, so, but that was, I understood, was not something, you know, we're not in a position to decide that right now until we get that, that official number, but I'm just saying, those are, those are, those are, there are two ways of looking at the, at how to bring back a vote on town services.
I've been doing my homework. It's about 50/50 on that.
I'm sorry, you mean just...
About 50%, four, 50%?
Just public sentiment, I see.
And like you said, like George says, that 484 figure could possibly come down, because you'll be probably four to five months into the budget, so that figure probably could come down, because of course, you're already got four or five months under the belt, so George is right, it might drop that figure down if you didn't put it on until October, right? Or November, November?
It would only drop it for this year. It wouldn't change.
It would change next year, we'd go back up next year.
So, that's why you can't...
Yeah.
I mean, I... All right, listen to me. I'm going to air this out, because, obviously, now that we've got this out there, this is a matter of public record, anybody can find it, you know what the override is. There are two issues. When you, when you separate it, you pit one department against another, who's more important, who isn't? Is the fire department training more important than POCs and recs? So that's my hangup with that, is, and I think that, and I thought about this, and I talked to the administrator, I talked to the chair, and their concern was if you place both on, what if the town passed, what if the school failed? And we'd have to take the money from that. I honestly think that if, in fact, and I said this before, that if everybody we put through, their cost savings, what it takes to operate their departments, you know, I don't think there was a board member who sat back and said, "Jeez, you're not being truthful. Jeez, you don't need that many people. Training isn't important." None of us said anything like that. We said, "You know what, you guys did a good job. Thanks for going through the motions." And I just don't know how you turn your back on that, and say that a few months ago, it was important, do we separate it from the school? Guys, if we believe that the school did everything we asked, and I believe they did, or we wouldn't be faced with that number from where it was. You were over a million dollars last time. So, that's a big change, and anytime you get changed like that, I'm sure there's pains. The town felt a lot of pains. So, I just don't know how you say that, that it's not important anymore. I mean, and I get the point, I get it, guys, I really get it, that if the school goes down, we're going to get that bill anyways. Somehow, we're going to pay that bill. So, again, if that was the feeling, it's our job as selectmen in this town to stand up if we believe in it and fight for it. And I will tell you this, and, you know, and I'm glad you're here, Mary, and Beth's here, too, is I wasn't going to do it, I'm going to do the talk of the town. I think that's a good platform to get this out. I would recommend that my fellow board members join me. I think it's that critical that if we believe in this, that we're out there selling it. And I can tell you this, last time, nobody sold it. Other than telling people, and I had one guy tell me, you know why he didn't vote for it? His sewer bill's too high. Jeez, that's got a lot to do with it, enterprise law, you know, you pay for what you use. So, did people really understand what we're asking for? This school budget at 260 is 8,000 off of the minimum contribution, and you know what? You're going to see signs out there, again, your taxes are going up 500, which is nothing but a lie. So, what do we do? We put this out there, this is the truth, guys. We don't make it up. We're very fortunate, and I'd invite anybody, come on in, we have an auditor that does our books. Not like we can hide anything, and we come out good, every time. We're congratulated, yeah, they find a couple of things, but nothing, nothing compares to when you start taking away services and you have an effect on town services, how do you get them back? They never come back. I told you, in 1978, 18 highway workers, and the anticipation was, we'll get them back one at a time. We lose them one at a time. So, that's my frustration. I get why the town administrator and the chairman is a little concerned, but you know what, guys? We either sell this, or we go down. And if we don't sell it, shame on us, because you know what we get? We get a... We get a no, I mean, jeez, I don't know, I mean, if I listened to the no's, okay, or the rejection, I wouldn't be married for forty-one years. That's the truth, guys. Because I could've gave up and said, "You know what, she wants nothing to do with me." But I lasted forty, well, she lasted forty-one years. So I mean, that's what this is about, guys, this isn't about, you know, whether the library, the fire department, parks and recs, the highway, the town hall, COA is unimportant. How do you pick? Because to me, a town service is what we provide, and that's our obligation, and our obligation is to sell this. Sorry, but that's where I stand on it.
Just, so I understand, Gary, what you're saying, you're saying both, both the town services and the schools you're talking about, or focusing on the school?
I'm talking about both because...
So you think they should both be on the...
If we're gonna go for it, you strike while it's hot. Because I can tell you, if we wait till December, half the people that we got rid of are gonna be gone, they'll either have a new job or they'll retire. Then you gotta, training, I mean, it's everything, so if you think the expense is less, it costs you more. And that's my frustration with this, and it's not, you know, listen, if we put this out there, you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, a hundred and fifty dollars more a year on your tax bill, roughly. I mean, you know, you saw the signs, guy, five hundred, it was never five hundred. It really wasn't. And you know what, I don't know, I spend, let me see, I buy probably two or three coffees, you know, is that three dollars and eighteen cents now? You know, that's what I spend a day with the breakdown process.
Three dollars and eight cents a week for both services, so... One large iced coffee.
I guess you gotta put it... But we need to make people understand, and you're gonna have the naysayers, guys, and you're gonna have the people that I, I understand, don't want their taxes to go up, you know, time's not any better now than they ever were, but when are they good? I don't know, I mean, I still work same amount of hours for less money than I did before, but you know what? Somehow, I pay my bills, so...
Again, are we, are we, is this discussion about both of them, or do we just focus?
I'm a hundred percent behind the school, town services, I am for.
I personally would like to see an analysis of costs from the, depending on when this would go for a vote, reflective of the, of the amount of time we're already into, into this year. I know you run into the problem, if you bring back a position for part of the year, then you have to, it makes it sound like, you know, then you've taken care of it for, then you've taken care of it for, for next year, and I realize that... I realize that that requires some explanation.
Feedback from our town voters, please, tell us what you think.
Yeah, I would love to hear myself, I, and as well as the issue about controlling, having more say on the vote. I don't think, you know, I, I know what you're saying, Gary, but I don't like to characterize this pitting one department against another. What we're doing is giving people the option of expressing their, their priorities. And it's not practical to do every year in the, in the town meeting to, to break the budget into parts. But in this case, we heard anecdotally, it's true, there's no scientific sample, that some people, some people wish they would've, could've had a little bit more control because they liked, they were in favor of one over another, they felt like one, one area of service to them meant, was, was of higher value than another. And I don't have people, a problem with people saying that, as long as there's a recognition that what, what comes with a community is that we, you end up, you're always gonna end up paying for services you don't use. So I think that's, and that's inevitable, and we all have our different priorities, but I, I do think we're, I can't see bringing this total back just in its original form and its original, and its original figure, because I feel it sounds like we haven't, we haven't heard the voters. And I've said that in front of the school committee, I'll continue to say that, that I, we cannot be seen as not hearing with the voters. So we, if we're gonna bring it back, and that's, and that's, you know, in a, in a democracy where the, where the majority rules, I mean, that, that takes a certain amount of, gotta have good reasons for bringing a vote back. Even if people didn't understand, even if they mixed it up with their sewer and water bills, nonetheless, that's, that's not our fault. We can't, we can't be, be taking votes because we discover after the election, people didn't understand the issue. But I would like to, I would like to offer people in this circumstance, where we're, we're bringing it back for a second vote, that there's, that, that it's just not the same vote. Now, I realize we're not gonna decide that now, but I just wanna get that out there. But I will go with whatever the, if, if, if this board votes and sets the warrant for the total, I'll get behind that total.
So what you're saying, George, is wouldn't we decide to put this on? That you want us to go, and this figure's gonna change every week? You know?
You can't, it's a budget for next year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you, I can see what you're saying, because these, every week, these figures here go down.
Yes, they do, I, I figure if we, we get together finally as a board, when we, when we have the, the school, when we have the vote tomorrow night, we get together again to, to set a warrant, we'll, we'll talk about what would, if, if we didn't have the vote on, on this, on, if we didn't have the, the, the vote on town services at the same time as the school, then when would we have it? And then, and then, you know, when the election would have to, would happen, and then what, you know, what balance of the year we're looking at?
Well, without doing a special, what's, what's the fall with, in November? Yeah, so you'd have to wait till November, if you didn't put it on with the school, which would be, what'd they say, September now, for the school? I believe the second weekend, September, I think, something like that. That would be the soonest we can get that on there, so... I don't know, we'd have to take a, figure out which way you wanna go on that, you know? Do you wanna put it off for another three months, or do you wanna try it in a month, you know?
And I'd like to see the numbers from, from Adam on that and what that represents, and I assume Adam's gonna talk to department heads and see what it would take to, you know, to bring back, if not, the, the full slate of services that were reduced, you know, partially, what, what will, you know, what will, you know, three hundred thousand dollars get us, or two hundred thousand, two fifty get us? I think that's an analysis I'd like to see.
What was the amount approved through the town meeting? Is that the four eighty-four? I don't know, guys, I'm just throwing it out there, I think that, you know, and I know we're worried about the schools, and nobody's more worried about it than I am. But, but I can tell you, it is... What if it went by itself and it didn't pass? So, you know, I think we're just, we're trying to mix loud one against the other, that's my only thought, is, and...
It seems to me, if you really had doubts about the, the school, any concern about the school number passing, then you would be less inclined to, to add the town services to that, because I think it, it, it makes a much larger total. One of the things going for us, I think, already is we've brought down that total, what was the technology? That exclusion being brought off the table? I'm, I'm concerned that it, that it's still, it's a, you know, six, you know, seven fifty, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar, seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar override.
The town one over ride was like two oh eight, two thousand eight. I don't know, it's just my feeling, if you're gonna, if we're gonna push, and we're in agreement, then I say, it doesn't matter. And we'll see how the board feels when we vote on what we say on that piece.
Get the, hopefully the school does their thing tomorrow, approves that budget.
I will tell you, and I hope anybody watching understands that where these numbers were, where they are now, and the work that went into getting it to where it is now. And kudos to the town administrator, a lot of time and effort. The school committee worked hard to get it down. And I think they did what we asked, you know? And I can tell you, is if it get, if it does fail and we're back to going the distance again, I think everybody should be concerned because the state can give you a bill. And that's the key behind this, is any time, the only thing I know, any time the state comes in, the stats telling you what to do, usually costs you more money. It does, you know, I mean, think back, and just one good example is the Quinn bill, the state was gonna fund it. Town's voted, yeah, we're gonna give it. All of a sudden, now we cut back fifty percent, you guys are gonna pick up to fifty, you know? So, you know, if you want them in your backyard and you want them in your pocket, they're gonna lift you all, I promise you, so...
Okay, all right, any other questions?
No, just a comment.
Any other comments?
Just to have the citizens please contact us, let us know how you feel, please. It's very important.
Do we have any citizens that wanna speak?
Wood, forty-three North Spencer Road. I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people who use the library and have come to tell us that they did not understand what happened in May. I'm coming also to speak on behalf of town services in general, my colleagues. I appreciate the approach you're taking, that town services really belong together. When I first came here as director in nineteen ninety, every department was pitted against each other. When you went to town meetings, departments were voting down raises for each other's department. It was a very uncomfortable and difficult position. Over the years, a lot of progress has been, been made, to the point where, when I sit in department head meetings and look around at my colleagues, I see people who are committed to working together, to finding the best ways to save money, the best ways to be as efficient as we can. I think we've come a long way towards that, and I appreciate that attitude. So I need to speak specifically about a library issue because it does affect the timing and it does affect whether we choose to go for an override. First of all, as most of you know, the library was the hardest hit when it came to staffing. I've lost over half my staff. We now sometimes try to run a busy public library, you know the size of the building. On some days, when by three o'clock, we've had two hundred people through the door. This is with no programs, no active other programs to bring people in. But with that many people, and I've run it on with just two of us. We've had issues with threats when people don't like that we have to close at five o'clock and shut down computers. I'm having problems with behavior that we can't control because one person cannot simply monitor an entire building. So we're having some serious security issues. So that is one concern, that what we, we are trying to do the very best. I understand the principle, we, you deal, the cards you're dealt, and we are doing the very best we can. And I've always said this, we'll do the best library service we can, but we're getting into really sometimes scary territory, and we're certainly not in a position to offer anywhere near the level of services. We're library on life support right now. But more important, what we're facing, and I think we've discussed this back in May and in April and in March, we are facing the issue that the library funding was cut so dramatically and so much out of proportion to what it had been and to what other departments have had, that when we go through the process of applying for our state grant, our state aid, and to certify the library, we are not in compliance, anywhere near in compliance. Every year since I've been here, we've met state grant standards. And in the end, this is not just about the money, it is more about certification, and that's what we're hearing from voters, from people who thought they would vote against raising their taxes, but never realized the implications. And so what I will have to do is turn in a report to the state in October that tells them that our municipal appropriation requirement, which is the figure that we need to aim for, is seventy-five thousand dollars off of its total. That's an incredible amount. We face then the problem that the town will have to go to, through a process, we apply for a waiver. We will have, the town accountant will be involved, the town administrator, I will, we have to go through a process, go to the Board of Library Commissioners, explain what happened here in Spencer, and explain why the library was so severely cut. If we can't convince them that there was no avoiding this, if we can't convince them that, that this figure is all we can do, then the library becomes decertified, and that is the number one issue I'm here about tonight because I'm hearing it from people who never put the pieces together. If we are decertified, and that process is not going to happen right away, it wouldn't happen until closer to January. If you have a library card and you are a citizen of Spencer, you cannot use library services in the state of Massachusetts anywhere but in Spencer. It doesn't matter if you got your card from Worcester or from Northbrook Field or from anywhere else. You cannot use library services. Now, I believe that there's a myth out there that people don't use libraries anymore. I can tell you as somebody who is working really hard on the front lines these days to provide those services, that the book bins are full, I invite you to come down, and we empty our book bins every morning. We are now circulating thirteen thousand items a year just on interlibrary loan, and we're ahead of that schedule this July alone. People are coming into the building, there are days when it's difficult to find everyone a place to plug in their wifi or to sit, you're a cool and centering member, and you can talk to others for a lot of people. At their materials, so we're busy, and people, people really care whether they can use their library card or not. Also, what has happened in library work is, is the whole online aspect to it. And so some people may not step into the library, but they use the Mango Languages database, they use the resume database, and in increasing numbers, they're using the free downloadable audiobooks, the free downloadable ebooks. That will go away, your library card number, if you are from Spencer, is no good. And I just wanna put this in a little perspective, to become decertif, a decertified library in Massachusetts is incredibly rare. It will be all over the news because it is not a customary thing, even in tough times, very few libraries are decertified. Right now, there are eight libraries that don't meet certification requirements. It's mostly because they didn't apply, and there are towns like Savoy or another, some of the other hill towns in western Massachusetts. If you know those areas, they're gorgeous little towns, but they're very small populations, and they may or may not have a library. Those are the kind of libraries that might not be certified. We would become one of the few libraries in the state, once we go through this process, to be decertified. I know of only two other towns right now facing one. So if you are a lifelong citizen of Spencer, as I am, it's pretty disturbing to think that that would be happening. So I'm urging you to place this on, on the ballot, and I'm urging you on behalf of my fellow colleagues in other departments who are suffering the same we are. We, we tend to be people who will work the extra hours unpaid, we tend to be people who will want to do our jobs right. You can't do a job right if you don't have enough time to do it. In our case, the five people who went away weren't sitting on their hands, and so now we're having to do all of that work. It's incredibly frustrating to try to keep that. That way, in town, whether it's providing training, whether it's keeping offices open, it's incredibly hard. So I wanna urge you, because I feel in talking to people, that they didn't understand the implications of what they were voting for. And we also know the vote was very close. I think there are a couple of myths out there, and I would like to speak to those because that's really, I think, what you folks are having to deal with. The first myth is that, well, we all have trouble, our personal budgets are tight, we all have to tighten our belts. This isn't belt tightening, this is starvation that's happening to us right now. And I want to ask the question, if your electric bill goes up, don't you pay it? If beer costs more, don't you buy it? This is your town bill, this is what it costs, and those of us who deliver this to you are working incredibly hard to keep that bill as low as we can, but in the end, this is the bill you pay. And I would make as an aside, most of the things that I pay for that have gone up, any of those things forementioned or others, some executive way up is getting to fly his jet around and do a lot of other things with that money. If this money is to pay a town bill, you're getting those services, you can walk into my library, you can walk into a town office, and you can give us your opinion, you can give us your view on what's going on. Your, what you're paying for with this town bill is for the things that matter to you and your neighbors. The other myth I'm hearing is that magically, we're going to find the money. The other myth I'm hearing is that magically we're going to find the money. Well, as you well know, you don't find the money, it doesn't fall from the clouds. Yes, sometimes we get grants, yes, sometimes money comes through because you had to estimate and it was a little bit higher, but in the end, you're not finding money, you're taking it from somewhere else. I will attest to that as a department, and I know this has become sort of a, a byword, but I don't have my microfilm reader yet. It was approved two town meetings ago by the voters, but the decision was made to take that money back because we needed it for other purposes. And I understood why that was happening, except that this summer, I'm standing there with people coming in from all over the country to do their genealogy, and they do it in the summer, I'm listening to those people say, you're the only place in the world, I can get the new, the new leader for 1948, why can't I get the article? And I'm saying, I no longer have a reader that will provide it to you. So, I understand that money gets cut, but that money doesn't fall from the skies, and you folks have had to wrestle with this issue, many of you, for years. You understand that, that it has, we have to take it from other places. So, in the end, I'm urging you because also, as you were saying, Gary, I'm a lifelong citizen of this town. I grew up in here, I, I've been library director since 1990, but I've been library user since the early 50s. And I really understand that it's, this is a difficult thing for you to do, and it takes a lot of courage to stand up to people who are giving out these myths or who are angry and who don't want to come forward for the town. But I believe there are good, decent people in this town who do not want to see us become a laughing stock, people who want to see their neighbors prevail, who want to see services even if they don't pay for them. So, in conclusion, I just want to thank you for the hard work you've done and to say that I, I hope, I'm going to urge you to move on this question. Thank you for your time, I understand the difficult job you have.
One more question, if, supposing we had, we had the vote and services were restored, how does that, that hiatus where, wherein the town of Spencer was, was cut back for a period of, you know, two or three months, how does that affect certification?
Actually, right now, there's no threat to it. We took the lowest amount of hours, which is 32 hours. Unfortunately, when you cut as many people as we did, keeping it open is, has become grueling. It, it is really difficult. So, but we never, we knowingly did not do anything else to jeopardize that position. So if it does come that, that we get the money in the end and can restore some services, restore them to a level that would preserve it, we haven't, we haven't burned any bridges yet. And, and to your point, yes, it's a few months later by the time we take this void, this vote, I would expect the figure certainly from the library end would, would be a little bit lower, that, that goes without saying, and that's something I'm sure department heads could provide to you depending on the, the time period.
So the certification is, is, that comes from the state is more than just ours, but it's, it's a, a, it's a program picture, it's a...
Exactly, yes, it's a combination.
Okay, all right, just, just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Okay, I'll say, thank you.
Anybody else? One more.
Mary Brainey, 15 Pine Acres Road. I've been listening, I listened carefully, Mr. Stevens, to what you said about hearing the voters, having, that they voted against the override at one point, and why would we be bringing it back? Why would we be bringing the same number back? And I think you've heard a couple of people say that, for planning purposes, and I mean, this is the cost of doing business, and I think that everything in town has been shaved to the max, services have been given up. I believe that perhaps as a town leader, you need to be able to say to the people that we understand that you voted against this, but all these things are very important, we recognize that they're vital. You made some comments when you first started speaking earlier this evening about living in a community, commending the school department, et cetera. So my concern is if you truly value the services of the community, that, to the community, that perhaps as a town leader, you need to say to the voters very, very respectfully that you understand that they voted against it, but that it is so important and so critical to the way that the town survives that you are asking that they reconsider their vote because as you said, you, you know, and as, as Mr. Woodbury said, you're much more supportive, you're much more vocal about how supportive you are now than you were the first time it came up. I think it's very, very important that you as the town leaders are very clear about that, that you're not soft on, on, on the topic, that you don't leave the voters thinking, you know, some of what Mary Baker Wood just said, that money will fall from the sky, that it will turn up somewhere. Fiscally, are we going to have to, you know, and, and on the finance committee, what do I ask everybody, everybody about their budget, is this sustainable? If the total amount of the override is not presented for the town side, based on partway through the school year and, I mean, through the fiscal year and the, and the reduction in cost because people have not been paid for a while, and it, and it's been said tonight, what will happen when we start the budget cycle again in November, planning for FY16? That, we will, if it's based on FY15 numbers that are less than the actual 12-month cost, what will happen? How will we justify asking again for a higher percentage than the actual cost when the actual cost is not based on the actual need? Do you see what I'm saying? Okay? So I'd, I'd really, it's something I'd really...
Can I respond to that now or do you want to continue?
Oh, sure, no, no.
No, just, and, and...
You can respond or not, I just do something I like you thinking about.
The conversation with Adam about this on Monday, and, and one thing that I would want to make clear, if, if we're, if asking for the full amount, is that this is a full year total and that, that we are, in all honesty, not going to use this, all this, and that this will come back to us in the form of free cash. What I'm really trying to avoid, because I've seen it and felt it on the, on the outside, experienced it myself, I, I don't want to feed any cynicism out there, any notion that they're, you know, they, they take it a little more than they need so they can put some aside, I, I don't want that. So if, if we were to go ahead with a, with a, a figure which reflective of a whole year's needs, I would want to be very clear that, that we're well into this year, we're not going to use it all, but this is, this is, this is to get us back to the level where we should be at the start of, of the year. And therefore, you know, it's going to increase our free cash, not that that's going to go off someplace because we have plenty of needs for free, free cash and capital and all, but if, if we, so if we did that, I just want to make sure it's all on the table. That's, that's what I would want to be clear.
As it should be, and I respect that the voters in this town are intelligent. They, they listen carefully, they pay careful attention, and they will make an informed decision. They will vote based on the best interests of the town, I'm, I'm, I have faith in that, as long as they believe that there isn't some sort of fudge factor in, in it. And it's, every single year, for the past five or six years, we have balanced the budget on the backs of town employees, we have cut everything we can, place by place by place. Somewhere along the line, we have to draw a line so that we can begin to rebuild and get back to the 18 highway department workers that were here. Get back the library staff, et cetera, until we stop trying to do more with less. And please, I, you know, I'm an old Yankee, I will be as economical as anyone can be, I will make a dollar go as far as it can go. But we reach a point at which we have to recognize the value of the services, the value of the money, and how are we going to stop the bleeding that's been going on and at least become stable, become sustainable? Thanks.
Okay, we got one more.
Server 23 Summit Street. I agree with what both Marys said. I think this board's done a great job, as have all the administrators, coming forward, talking to people, sitting through the meetings, explaining where the money's going, explaining where the money's been. Guys have done a great job, there's no two ways about it, and, and your staff has done a great job. I, we've talked about this before, we talk about this all the time, Paul and I talk about this. Mary brought up, John brought up a good point. John said, you know, we don't want anybody thinking we're fudging and holding back. Well, keep in mind, in 2008, this town council did exactly that, none of you were on it. A recently departed member and a current state rep stood up in front of this town and told them, we need this $1.2 million override, there's no money in the town coffins. I sat at that meeting, and that is part of what you guys are paying for. Was it your fault, was it the town's fault? But two selectmen on this board knew that there was money in those accounts, and Paul Guida, six weeks before that election, told me there was money in those accounts, and they knew there was money in the accounts because I had conversations with everybody on the board at that time. And what happened? Override passed, they found $1.2 million three weeks later. Who knew? Okay? That's part of what you're paying for, okay? It's not, has nothing to do with you guys, it's no reflection on you guys, we've talked about this at length, I've talked to you guys, some of you guys personally about this. You got the school committee on the other side and the administration. This is a group that does keep finding money. In 2010, Dr. Hicks told me when I was on the school committee, we're gonna lose 12 to 16 teachers. And what happened at the end of the year? They found $800,000 after Ralph left. Oh, no. This school has a constant, constant habit of finding money after the fact. They came up with the money for the computers, now we're down to like, like what Gary said, the state mandated minimum, and that's important for you guys to be pushing. They're only a few thousand dollars over what's mandated by the state, they have, we have to pay that. We don't have a choice, that's the mandated minimum. What is it, $8,000, Gary? I believe? Over the, over the state minimum, okay? That has to be paid, whether we like it or not, we as taxpayers have to pay that. That's the state is gonna, the state's gonna hold our feet to the fire on that. So for them to ask over $8,000 is not a tragedy. In fact, it's a pretty good move. But here's the ki, here's the kick. People want to invest in a system that they care about, not a dry hole. And this system is a train wreck. You've got two schools in Level 3 status, you've got one teetering on Level 3 status, you have a principal who was recently given a three-year contract, yet we got assault charges against, against students, we got teachers looking, three teachers looking to possibly have their license pulled, we have an administrator who fails to give any information, now won't release any information. We had Dr. Naaman, need I say anymore? And I'm partially responsible for that, I'm the one to help put him on there as part of that search committee. There's no confidence in this system, and if you've looked at that school committee and some of the members on that school committee, no wonder people don't have any, any, any faith in this school system, you know? And we've been saying for over a year, we need a forensic audit, we need to open up the books of this school, to give people the reason to trust this school again, and that has yet to happen. I don't, I don't know what to tell you guys. That school is a train wreck, and it's not going to change overnight with a new superintendent. I don't know what to tell you. As far as the job you guys have done, I got no complaints. You guys have tried to do everything you possibly can, you know? And, and both of the Marys are right, you know? We, we can't, we, we gotta stop the bleeding at some point, but the thing that's hanging around our neck right now is the school system, and nobody's making any demands on the school system. And I understand everybody wants to say, yeah, look, we need to support this, because you know what, we do. We do, this is the state minimum. We have to support this, we don't have a choice. And it's saying this, the state's gonna come in and charge us more money? Ralph Hicks said that, 2011, I believe, no, take it back, 2012, he said it at the town meeting. They could come in and assess us $26 million. Well, they did, they assessed us a hell of a lot less than any of us thought, and actually they told us live within your means. So to say that the schools, the state's gonna come in and they're gonna assess higher, state doesn't want anything to do with us. The state does not want to come in and do our job. Okay? So let's, let's take that right off the table, let's, you know, that's, that neither hand or there. Maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't, but I wouldn't be pushing that, that particular, that particular button. But the bottom line here is you guys did a great job. Gary, I'm glad to hear you doing the show, I think, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a good fit. And I think you guys do need to get out there and push this thing. And John, I respect your opinion, you and I talked about this at length. Just because you have a, a different opinion from somebody doesn't mean you're wrong. That's what I want from a selectman, I want somebody who's gonna challenge my ideas of what I think is right, you know? And I get that from people constantly, they say, well, you're pretty opinionated, it's like, well, change my mind. Make me a, make a better argument. Doesn't happen very often, but you made a good argument, you and I sat in the hallway for a half hour one night talking. I think you guys are doing a good job, just, you know, try to keep, keep your heads up and, you know, the voters are gonna do what the voters are gonna do, like I wrote in a piece, I've, I've been pro, pro override a second time since the beginning, but I do understand how people are so pissed about having this come back up again, I get it. If I were on that side that voted against it, then I'd be angry, I'd be saying, why are we bringing this up again? But I get it, there's too many people's lives involved and we are a community. Vinny Cludy keeps telling us that all the time, we are a community. Well, I'd like to think that we are, so if we could get it done, that would be great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Bob. Is anybody else on this call? Anybody else?
That being said...
Yep.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.